And will the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamash.
Here.
Commissioner Reinert.
Here.
And we are all present and accounted for. Next, we'll look for approval of tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Look. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes. Fifth on your agenda will consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and purchase card claims paid for the period ending June 18th of 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Look. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, we will look for approval of the minutes from June 22nd, 2021 of our county board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
The moves.
Motion by Commissioner Look. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Any discussion or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, please say no. The minutes are adopted. Next, we have chairs remarks. We have one item under chairs remarks today, and that's to note that in just seven days, we'll be celebrating the Anoka County Fair. This year, the fair runs from Tuesday, July 20th to Sunday, the 25th. I will say it feels great to be talking about the right of summer in our county again. Since last year, we didn't have the opportunity to host a fair due to the pandemic. I think we're all looking forward to visiting the fairgrounds, sampling an assortment of tasty foods, maybe going on a ride or two, listening to some talented musicians, and being entertained by a variety of grandstand events planned for each day of the fair. Mike Allers, president of the Anoka County Fair Board, will now talk about what to expect at this year's fair. Mike is here, and we also have Malcolm Beck from the fair, but we'll hear from Mike.
Well, thank you so much for the invitation to come here and speak to you. I just want to tell you, there's a lot of excitement and nervousness over what the county fair is going to look like this year. We were very fortunate in all of the events, attractions, grandstand events that we had for, planned for last year, that we were able to carry over all those contracts into this year. So there's no hiccups on any of our grandstand events, like Tuesday, we have our motocross. Wednesday, we have bull riding with mutton bustin'. And mutton bustin's when we actually have sheep, and we put kids on it, and they get little trophies and ribbons for how long they can stay on a sheep. And then on Thursday and Friday, we have NTPA tractor pulls. So those are the big tractors. Then on Saturday, we have Big Air Event. They, there actually been, there's a movie that they've been in, and they've done a lot of stunts for some Hollywood movies, too, jumping their four-wheelers and motorcycles. So they're going to come out and do an exhibition on Saturday. And then demo derbies on Sunday. So all of those that were supposed to go on last year ended up resigning, or actually we just carried the contracts over. So that was really nice. Other than that, just like most of the stuff that we have at our county fair annually, we're going to have, one thing that we will not have because of the pandemic is we did opt to not have a petting zoo this year, just because of the interaction with so many of the children touching the exact same thing and touching animals in a hard time, figuring out just how to try to keep everybody in a comfortable environment with that. We opted not to have a petting zoo this year. Again, it was just a choice that we made, just trying to satisfy everybody's, I don't know, pandemic fears. Other than that, we plan on having everything else. We struggle like everybody else right now, just trying to get volunteers. So if anybody would like to volunteer at the fair, you can call our fair office. It's on the website, anokacountyfair.com, and you can get in contact with us there. We'd love to have some more volunteers to help. Do any commissioners have any questions?
Any questions for Mike? Well, thank you, Mike. We really appreciate you talking to the board today and to the public and letting us know what's going to happen at the fair, and we're all excited about it.
And from the board, from our board to your board, thank you guys so much for all the support that you guys continually give us. Thank you.
Well, it's been a great pleasure working with your board through our facilities team and just making sure that you have what you need. I know Commissioner Look has a comment, so we'll let him wrap up here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just want to say, free parking, free grandstand. What's the ticket cost this year?
$10 for adults, $5 for children, 7 to 12, and 6 and under is free. Senior Day is Wednesday for $5.
So for $10, everything you get, you know, pretty much free in there, aside from the food and the rides and that sort of thing. But what an awesome time, and again, it's kind of one more step closer to normal. I do want to draw attention to the fact that they just seal coated the entire area over there. Beautiful job, kind of continue to invest in that area. I know the county board made an investment a few years back in repaving that area, so it's going to be a great, great time, so.
It is. Come on out and see it.
Well, thanks again, Mike.
Thank you.
And I'd like to take this moment to remind the viewers at home that at noon on the first day of the fair, we'll be conducting the flag raising ceremony to kick off the fair festivities. This event pays homage to the men and women who have fought and died to preserve and enhance the liberties that we all enjoy in this great country. We encourage members of the public to attend this ceremony. It's always wonderful to see the visitors in the audience as we recognize our veterans by hoisting old glory. Now, on to committee reports, beginning with the management committee. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three items on our agenda. The regular agenda is for information only, but first item is a new position in administration and emergency communications effective today. It's a 1 FTE CAD and technical coordinator, grade C013.
For those following along, we are on the additional agenda now, and this is the first item under management on the additional agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reinert. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that item passes.
And the next item is a new position in administration in the medical examiner's office. It's also effective today. It's a 1 FTE office investigator, grade B011.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Reinert. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just to share, it was talked about in the management committee with just the expansion of all the contracts with this office. This is budget neutral, and I'm glad that they are getting the support that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
That item passes.
And next is a new and restructure. It's just going from a .5 FTE to a 1 FTE with the incumbent, and it is library delivery driver in a grade A007.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Meisner and a second from Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, we'll move on to item B, where we are looking to adopt a resolution 2021-M8, a resolution of affirmative action in employment and equal opportunity policy statement. Is there an offer of the resolution?
So moved.
I have an offer of the resolution by Commissioner Reinert. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I cannot remember the last time that this was updated. I know that it was overdue, so I do thank staff for doing that, because, you know, for affirmative action, this is a state mandated things that we need to have in place. So I did just want to point that out, and I want to say it's been several years. I know, okay, so thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That item passes. Next, we are looking to adopt a resolution 2021-M9, a resolution establishing the employee engagement and inclusion committee and dissolving the focus communications program.
I'll offer the resolution.
The resolution has been offered by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We got this updated in the management committee and had a report or a PowerPoint giving us some information about laying out certain things within this new employee engagement and inclusion committee. And I just have a couple of questions that I still have out there, and I kind of want to run through a few things real quickly. Every year, we get this from our board chair, where he or she selects who's going to represent us on different committees, different commissions, advisory committees, and boards. Some are voting members, others are liaison positions or advisory committees. These are all, these are, these all have some very important work to be done, and it's important to the county. And we currently have nine separate areas that are listed within this document that commissioners are assigned to as lead commissioners. There are aging, Americans Disability, with Disability Act, diversity and inclusion, elections and reapportionment and voter registration, insurance and retirement maps, pay equity, pipeline, safety legislation, and real estate. We are currently removing the diversity and inclusion topic from this handout with this resolution. It was mentioned in the management committee that we are doing this because the new employment, engagement, and inclusion committee is replacing the diversity inclusion and inclusion committee and will report to the management committee, which makes some sense in one regard, but doesn't connect all the dots for me in other areas. Looking at some of those other areas would be, we have our property tax committee, which is where our elections fall into that category. So when we discuss elections, we have people from our elections department. Paul will be there and telling us all about what's going on in the elections. We also have this appointed committee of, for elections, reapportionment, and voter registration. We have pay equity. Well, pay equity falls under the management committee, and, but we have commissioners appointed to pay equity. We also have commissioners appointed to insurance and retirement, which is really kind of related in some regard to our employees, and I believe that probably falls under management as well. So we have these categories that we're filling, and for some reason, and it might make some sense, but to me, it doesn't make complete sense, because I'm questioning, why is diversity the one that's being pulled out, singled out for removal to this, to the chair's handout? My suggestion would be is that we talk about having the diversity inclusion committee or the topic of the committee, some, I still have a board appointment, because it's important to the county board. And we should continue and support and work with the employee engagement team, having this team or having this topic report to or work with this organization, this new part of the organization and employee engagement and inclusion committee. It makes sense. I don't, I mean, I think parts of what we're doing are making a lot of sense. We need to, we need to establish this within ER, but in the time that I was on, what was then called the culture committee, Mike Ruff, who was the director of ER at the time, sat in those committee meetings, and we made a lot of progress. We made a lot of progress of understanding the issues that we were facing, a lot of progress on doing things about some of those issues so that we could be out in the communities more, whether it was at different colleges across the Twin Cities area, or even at the high schools within Anoka County, letting people know what Anoka County does and what job opportunities are out there for them. So it did have some real positive effects, and I think over the last two years, as now the diversity committee, it has had even more positive effects, and I would like to see that continue in some fashion. And I guess the main point to the, to the board would be that I just don't understand why this is the group that is going to be moved, and I think there's some positivity of still having a commissioner appointed, because like I indicated before, we, we do have these different nine topics, and they all kind of fall within. I happen to be the one that's on the real estate group, and we meet every, prior to every property tax meeting, half hour before, rolls right into when I'm going to be the vice chair of that committee. So it feels like it's just the same, it has a relationship and a need, and I think the inclusion and diversity has the same relationship and need and could easily continue as a function moving forward. So I'm hesitant to support this resolution at this time, although I think there are some very, very good things within it. I just think we need to still have this one piece of having a commissioner appointed to a role as we do for other areas. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamash, before I go to Commissioner Reinert, I just wanted to comment one thing that if you can point to a, an organization, whether it's a private company, a government, a county, a city, that isn't radically changing how they address equity, inclusion, engagement, I would be surprised. And to me, this is our effort to do that. This is our effort to expand and embed that really important, hard work into everything we do at the county, not just one small committee that meets to talk about it, this, or do things about it. This is truly our chance to do what everybody else is doing, and if we don't, if we don't make a bold step for real change, then we haven't seen what's happened in the last 18 months. My initial thoughts. I'll go to Commissioner Reinert next.
Yeah, just have a few comments. You know, we've had extensive conversation about this at meetings that were not the county board, and here we are now going to act on it a little bit more visible, so I guess some of the things that have been discussed should be reiterated for the public. So this is employee engagement and inclusion. Commissioner Gamash says, you know, this is something that we think, that he thinks that we should continue. Well, we're, actually, it's an expansion of. And so some of the highlights, I guess, of things that are going to be happening with this is the person that's in charge of this used to have about a 20-25% involvement with this. There's a new position now being created, and that new position is going to have 75% of that person's time involved with this. Before, you would have employees that maybe have issues and need to discuss their issues with someone, and there was an entity that they would go to. And that entity, and maybe a sensitive topic, maybe that would be a little intimidating for that person to go and seek out that one point of contact to discuss these topics. And now, this is going to be bled into all the departments, and all the managers are going to be informed and educated and implement these topics. And so for employees, it's going to actually be better access, a more comfortable environment. It's going to be a safer feeling, I guess, for them to go to people who are, they're familiar with, to basically talk about these topics if there are issues. There's discussion about, you know, having representation, but actually, in these changes too, it's going to be all seven commissioners that are going to be responsible for not only seeing that this is implemented properly and that there is a, an expansion and improvement, comprehensive approach to these topics, and it's going to fall on our shoulders if there's not, and there will be measurement in the future. So, and also, it's my understanding that, you know, the way that the group operated prior, it was pretty isolated. I think Commissioner Brassad called it a silo. It's basically kind of their own entity, and there would, they would have, I guess, discussions and things, but it was kind of in an echo chamber. And although Commissioner Gamash, you said that, there were a lot of good things and good ideas that came out of this. I think that what this move is, is going to do as an improvement, it's going to take some of those ideas and actually have them, a way to implement them and to expand them and get those ideas that are good and should be shared with the entire county into, you know, a little bit more, like I said before, a more comprehensive approach. So, and finally, I guess, you know, you said that, you know, we do have liaisons to different groups, and this one is basically taking that liaison position and giving it to the whole county board instead of having one person. You know, you had, had mentioned pay equity, insurance, and retirement. You know, possibly some of those should be looked at, too, and whether or not those should be, maybe the insurance and retirement, possibly, that maybe needs to go into management. I guess I wouldn't have a problem with doing the same thing with other positions that are, that are created and liaisons that the commissioners have for different groups. It might make more sense to eliminate those as well and then to have them pushed into a larger group for, for a better improvement. So this is something, like I said, has had a lot of discussion, and, you know, we needed a lot of information on this to make this move, but I just, from what I've heard, it's, it's going to be an expansion of and an improvement of these efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner Reinert. And as a point of clarity, although we appoint commissioners to these fields of interest, they don't independently make big decisions. They don't spend taxpayers' dollars. They basically, on a daily basis, meet with staff that's involved, and if there's a decision that needs to be made, they help guide that towards a direction so it can come to the county board. For instance, if you talk about insurance and retirement, I may be the commissioner that's appointed to that field. I work with staff to help develop ideas to bring to the board a concept for, to be voted on. So it's not, it's not that when you're appointed to that board, you have full control and you're making the final decision. So it is good that it does come back before the board most of the time, if not all of the time, if a decision is made that spends money. Commissioner Meisner, then Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First and foremost, I want to thank and recognize the entire Anoka County Diversity Inclusion Committee and the leadership of our past coordinator, Mike Roth. Our committee members are as follows. Andrew Lindberg, Kaitlin Cordham, Christine Kapelhoff, Darren McGowan, Eileen Waterman, John Kreisel, Kelly Nieber, Kelsey Tour, myself, Nancy Norman, Sadie Abdella, and others that have contributed to this work are Georgia Karash, Jacob O'Neill, Jody Raymond, Mia Mason, excuse me, Brenda Vetter, Karen Blaska, and Kelly Sabo. In the last two and a half years, this committee has worked hard to modernize and identify diversity and inclusion needs in Anoka County. As the fourth largest county in the state and one of the biggest employers in the region, our goal and our focus has been to attract a more diverse workforce, as well as to retain, support, and recognize the diverse workforce that we already have. This committee's dedication and passion for this work is incredibly impressive. We have contributed much with very limited resources. With a zero budget and the inability to communicate our work to all employees, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee has produced multiple trainings covering topics from mental health, microaggressions, and the history of the American Disability Act. Our future plans include trainings on immigrant and refugee issues and the formation of employee resource groups. I have no doubt, if given the opportunity, this committee will forward the work that we have started. Next, I'd like to thank our board chair, Commissioner Schulte, for assigning me to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. The current resolution takes myself and any other commissioner off of this work, and as the first person of color, this has been an honor to shape this work alongside this talented group of people. Thank you so much for this opportunity. As I've, as I've mentioned in our, our first management committee and when this was first proposed, there are many really good things that make sense about this merger. Putting DNI into employee relations, having a dedicated coordinator, and collaborating with a larger pool of employees are all good things. As my last act as the signed commissioner, I will again ask this board to honor the specific work of diversity inclusion and allow them some autonomy to keep the momentum going. The heart of this work is not based on equality. Equality is the premise that everyone is treated the same. Diversity and inclusion work is based on equity, in which we recognize that systems and policies have an unequal impact on some groups of people, and only through examination can we bring change needed to achieve eventual and true equality. Any employer in the private or public sector that is serious about attracting and retaining their talent in the organization is currently doing this work. So my ask today is for us to merge diversity and inclusion within the Employee Engagement and Inclusion Committee under ER as proposed, and keep the DNI committee as a subcommittee. In this format, their work can continue to be focused and also be measured for their specific outcomes. As a subcommittee, they can also engage in other areas that are already doing like work within our staff, like human services. I believe this is a solution that will best protect the gains made, bring better resources and efficiencies, and open up opportunities with more staff members. I would like to make a motion to amend this current resolution with simply the addition that the diversity and inclusion be a subcommittee within the Employee Engagement and Inclusion Committee.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, and the second was by Commissioner Gamash. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion, those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
And that amendment fails. Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me just reiterate your comments earlier to me regarding some things, and I do not disagree with the fact that there needs to be some changes within ER and within some of the things that we were doing, and I believe that we are on the right track. And as a fact, it's, over the last few months, we've had kind of a restructuring. We have seen new hires in ER because there's a need there. We expect that there will be some more. As a matter of fact, I think one person that is going to be hired in the future will be part of this Employee Engagement and Inclusion Committee. So it's not the fact that we had a perfect system that we were working from. And as someone that has been in corporate America for more years than I want to admit, I have seen a lot of the changes that have gone on over just the last even 20 years, but yeah, things have increased in speed over the last few years for sure regarding a lot of different areas. So yes, there was a need to do things differently. I think part of this new setup will do some of that. That's my hope anyways. I'm hoping that we're on the right track. It looked to me to be a pretty good discussion. It looked to me to be a pretty good discussion point that we had at the workshop or excuse me, at the management committee, so I was happy to see that and I thought there were some good points made and I expect and I'm hoping that it'll work out as was laid out for us. Again, my only concern is this and as Commissioner Schulte did indicate, that those roles that we all have, we're not making any votes. We're just offering our expertise in some cases and whatever it might be, but I think this one still needs to be there and that's why I wanted to see something like that where we could still have a commissioner in that same relationship even though it's under ER. We've got, like I said, we've got a number of these different places that we're involved in and I still think it needs to be there at least and I'm hoping, like Commissioner Reinert indicated, that it'll come to all of us and all seven of us will be making that. Whether or not that is the best fit, again, I might be agreeing with Commissioner Reinert. Maybe there's some other areas that we don't need to be involved in on an individual basis if that's the case. So maybe we look at that. I hate to be the one that brings these things to light due to what just happened in the Parks Committee. Kind of brought something to light that now is maybe causing some changes with one organization. Didn't exactly mean it to go that route, but I thought it was important that it would be brought to the attention of our board and then the attention for budgetary issues within the Parks Department. But I don't want to always be the guy that brings those things up all the time, but sometimes it needs to be placed out there. So that's, I understand there's the need and I understand we need to make some changes and I think this is a good start. My only point was that I wish that we would still have a committee or at least what do you call a focus group, whatever you want to call it, that had a commissioner assigned to it similar to these other now eight, it used to be nine, that we currently have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have Commissioner Luck next, followed by Commissioner Reinert and then Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm trying to boil this down here. Essentially, we had one way of doing things. We're suggesting to move to a different way of doing things. The comments were that there was work that was done and I believe it was termed as good work that was done and some of this good work was where there was found unequal impacts of policies in Anoka County. That was the statement, that there was unequal impacts. What are those on, what, so this committee operated, they found unequal impacts. The board was not notified of unequal impacts to even be able to make any sort of changes whatsoever. I think the new system will allow that. But what I am asking is what were those unequal impacts? That's one question. And why is there an assumption that the new restructuring will no longer be able to identify unequal impacts?
Thank you for your questions, Commissioner Luck. I'm going to go to Commissioner Reinert next. He was next in line and then Commissioner Meisner. I'm assuming your questions are directed to Commissioner Meisner as she was the one who used those terms.
Mr. Chair, they are because I want to get away from making statements without fact. I want the facts to back up the statements. You can say something, but it doesn't necessarily make it true and I'm not calling into question her integrity, just we see a lot of that out there today. People make statements, it's not necessarily true. So if we're going to say that Anoka County's policies are unequal, okay, I want to know where, I want to know when and I want to know how we've addressed that because as a board, that is our fiduciary responsibility and this steps into kind of some pretty serious territory to make those type of accusations.
Understood, Commissioner Luck. Thank you. I'll go to Commissioner Reinert for his comments and then back to Commissioner Meisner.
Well, they say that the only two things you can be sure of is death and taxes. I disagree. It's also change. And this work in this county and I'm sure everywhere in this country has been changing for half a century and, you know, it's just as stated before, it used to be called the Culture Committee, then it changed to DNI and now we're making another change. And in every case, I believe that those changes are made for improvement and I personally believe that what staff brought us and worked so hard on to really dig down and find a better way of doing these efforts is the right way to go. You know, and I had mentioned it in the management committee meeting that, you know, just prior to this one, that, you know, a couple of things that Anoka County's done just recently and I think it's within the last two years is with applications, for instance. You talk about equity and having equal results. I mean, we've taken names off of and identity off of applications for people that are applying to work here and I think that's a good thing because then people are hired based on that resume and their background and their abilities and skills. So that and then also I think another thing that's been made as a change is used to, Anoka County used to demand that every single employee had a four-year degree and that's, you know, looking at some of the activities that take place, some of them were just looking for skill and ability and maybe a four-year degree isn't necessary. So we do now hire people that don't have a four-year degree sometimes if the skills and ability of that person and background, you know, fits what the job is and I think that's a good thing. It really, it's casting a wider net of talent out there to bring to the county and do the jobs that we need to have done. So, you know, it was mentioned that, you know, this group prior had a zero budget. I mean, if, I mean, if you think about that and then, you know, what that group can do with a zero budget and low amount of attention and being in a silo and then being able to comprehensively push this into all areas of the county and then with dollars, you know, I think that there's going to be an improvement, but I'll tell you what, there will be measurement of this and over time and we're, now this action does take away a liaison, but it will become very obvious, I think, to all of us that if in the future, through that process of measurement, to see whether or not there's been improvement or not, you know, whether or not we need to reassign a liaison and I would say that in the future, I think we should all be open to that possibility, but for now, this is a recommendation of staff and, you know, I guess with work that they've done and respecting their opinion, I'm agreeing with it, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Reinert. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Commissioner Luck, so I will, I will reply to some of your comments. So what I'm talking about is systemic racism. So for one thing, you're not going to find a policy anywhere in Anoka County that states we are against a certain race, religion, that type of group. But this work is what is the result of. So for example, when I talk about unequal impacts, why is it that in all of our committee meetings, there are very few, I mean, there aren't any people of color in upper management and upper top leadership? We have 2,000 employees, so just numbers wise, statistically, this is something that we examine, that we question, that we say and strive, how can we improve this? Public health doesn't have nurses who look like the communities they serve. So this is how diversity and inclusion work translates in real life. So this is not me. This is what I am hearing from staff, that there's a barrier of trust between our public health workers and community because when you don't come to the communities and reflect the communities you serve, it takes extra effort and time to build that trust. So again, these are the things that we identify, that we examine, how can we improve that? Anoka County has a population of 350,000 in our entire county with over, but at least a minimum of a 25% person of color statistic. We don't have a 25% statistic, again, in our workforce makeup. So I don't have the perfect answer and honestly, this work isn't about pointing fingers and saying, here's the, here's the problem. Well, actually, our work is to identify the problem, the challenges, how do we solve that problem? And it's not just about what we look like, by the way. There's diversity of thought. So for example, we have a, we have a public issue right now about our libraries and we cannot come together with our diverse interests and thoughts and talk about it. Those are things that diversity inclusion work focuses on. Education, how to bring diversity of thought and represent the people that are already here. But every, every private and public sector that, again, cares seriously about recruiting a diverse workforce, they are doing this work as a separate entity, whether that's a committee or a subcommittee, but that is, that is a best practice going on right now.
We are going to have a continued debate here for a little bit. I just want to lay a couple of small ground rules. Let's cut back as far as we can on repetition and make new points and develop thought process off the new points and then we'll get to a vote here eventually. I have Commissioner Luck next, followed by Commissioner Reinert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we've had this discussion about systemic racism and I've raised the same question as to how is it playing out in our county, okay, in Anoka County, in the organization of Anoka County? How is that playing out? I want to know. I want to know how so we can put an end to that, if it's existing, but I have yet to have somebody tell me that. I have people tell me, we think this is happening, we think that's happening. And what I'm hearing from you today is that because there's a 25%, that we should have 25% different hiring practices here at Anoka County. And I want to just direct everyone to the policy that we just adopted here was adopting Resolution 2021, Resolution on Affirmative Action, Employment and Equal Opportunity Policy Statement, in which it says, and I'll read, "Recruit, hire, train and promote persons in all job titles without discriminating on the basis of race, color, creed, religion, natural origin, sex, marital status, disability status with regard to public assistance, sexual orientation and age, except where such status is a bona fide occupational qualification." It doesn't say anything about thought, so I'll give you that one, okay? But as far as everything else goes, what you're telling me is we need to hire based on color and I will disagree with you on that because I believe that violates state law. So for whatever reason, if people don't, I didn't grow up thinking, I want to work for county government, that's going to be my future. For whatever reason, it's not necessarily promoted as a career or for whatever reason, some people don't apply or for whatever reason, we hire who are the most capable and talented and I appreciate Commissioner Reinert's explanation to the fact that we take the name and everything else, so we don't even know who we're looking at when we're hiring them, okay? So we can't even make judgment calls on anything. Not the judgment calls are happening, but certainly they can happen if you can't identify the person. But you're looking specifically at their professional criteria. Are they capable? Do they have the skill set? Are they a valuable, potentially a valuable member to a team that we're trying to build here to serve our constituents? And I'm being told that we need to eliminate some people so we can identify others and hire that. Is that true? Is that a true statement?
Commissioner Meisner.
No, that is not a true statement and so when you're, when you're, again, you're talking about, so we'll back this up. You're talking about barriers. Commissioner Ryan brought up a great point about a four-year college degree. I think we can all agree that, again, when I'm talking, I brought up public health nurses as one example. It is in fact a good thing when you can have professionals that reflect the communities that they're serving, again, to build that trust, to have accurate interpretation if there's a barrier language, I could, those are just a few examples. But so in terms of a college degree, and now you've mentioned that we have expanded that, what are the barriers around that in communities of color? Are they all getting the same access to get that college degree? So again, these are complicated issues that are not just black and white, here's one sentence. Again, you're not going to find a sentence or a policy in Anoka County that distinguishes discrimination against one group or another. I'm saying the result, though, of systems in place produces a kind of result. And again, I will go back to people of color in Anoka County right now who are in leadership roles. There are very few of them. We're elected officials and I'm the first person of color in the history to be elected on the Anoka County Board. So that's just, it's a fact and there's reasons for that. So if we care to examine those reasons, that's the work of diversity and inclusion.
I will go to Commissioner Reinert next.
Yeah, so Commissioner Luck did make some of the points that I was going to, although, you know, I do want to make the statement that a race does not define skill or ability. We are looking for the brightest and the best to serve the residents of Anoka County in the best way possible and I think that's what we're doing with some of the changes, not to reiterate again to your point, we don't need to belabor the point here, but, you know, the four-year degree policy that has no longer in place. It's in place for some of the positions that need that, but for others not, and then also the blind application process that we have. I mean, we're making strides and those were changes, I believe, just in the last year and a half, under two years anyway. And so we're making strides in the right direction so that we are not looking at anything but skills and ability and it is not defined by race.
For the public certification, just a quick clarification on four-year degrees and public health nursing. You do need a degree to be a public health nurse, so I don't, I don't want people to think we were trying to conflate those issues. When there's a job in the county that requires a four-year degree, we're going to make sure somebody has that. Commissioner Weston.
Just a comment. Andre Cohen, an African-American, wonderful, wonderful young man, was in this position, kind of ran the cultural committee when it was called that. One of his major goals was to get people of color or any other issue that is diversity-oriented to apply for jobs. He worked hard at doing that. He could not achieve it at the time. So it's not like the effort has not been put to actually go to these people, so, or people who you're talking about. So it's, this is not going to take that away to do it, this new idea that we have and I think that the idea, it's worth trying.
You know, I will make the comment too here. I think that we're kind of mixing up two different things here. We're mixing up what's expected of our culture in Anoka County, in the public in Minnesota, as opposed to what Anoka County, the government, should be doing. I think Anoka County government does its best to hire the best, to look at job applications blindly and look at just qualifications only and hire who we can. Yes, we need to do a lot of work outside of county government on a cultural level to prop up communities that are underperforming currently, whether they are communities of disability, communities of color, whatever it is. We've heard a lot over the last couple of years how important that is and we recognize that and we should be doing that as a community, but as a county government, we take who comes and we ask more people to come. We ask people to apply. Years ago, on this floor, the seventh floor, there were hardly any females. This was a male-dominated floor. County government was men and women started to break through and it took years. It took years and now I would go as far as to say the majority of the leadership team on our staff is female. Fair to say, that doesn't happen overnight. It took years to make that happen and I think we will keep telling the community, apply to Anoka County, no matter what color your skin is, no matter what your background is, no matter if you have disabilities, apply to Anoka County because we're a great place to work and we're going to include you from day one because of this program we're talking about. We're going to include you from day one and embed you into our processes. So as you work through, you have every opportunity to hit the top. You don't have to be stuck at that starting position. You have tons of places to move. So I think it's important, but I do think we were kind of blending those two different areas between what society is expected and what's expected of this government. And I think this step, this step today is a huge step in making our county more accountable to this really important action. This drive to engage employees in inclusion and diversity and bringing everybody together to make the workforce stronger is really important. We can't downplay it and I think this is a huge step to expand it and embed it internally into our processes. I think, yeah, I had Commissioner Meisner next. Mike, did you have your hand up?
No.
Commissioner Gamache, okay, sorry. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will try to make this my last comment because again, I really do hate to belabor some of these points. Just a few things, as you were mentioning, your comments about the role of government. Obviously, we as a board have the opportunity to shape what that looks like, right? So Dakota County, I talked about this in the management committee, Dakota County, which is most like us in size and that sort of thing. So we often kind of compare us as far as apples to apples with Dakota County. So in 2017, they started this work. I had a very lengthy discussion with one of the commissioners there and they are committing to, again, keeping this as separate, focused work. Now, does that mean that they don't blend it in? Of course not. The ultimate goal of this is actually 100% to incorporate it, just as you're saying. So we really do have the same goals, it's just how do you get there? And employees right now have the upper hand, as you know, in workforce. Mathematically, there are not enough people to fill any industry. We're all begging for people to come work in any, every sector of our business. So if you are serious about recruiting and then retaining the talent and not having the talent. and not having them get swept away somewhere else, we really have to then strive for excellence. And in my opinion, again, I've stated this, but we have to keep this work separate. Dakota County is committed to doing that. So that is just one example of a government entity that, in fact... So again, my point is we, as a board, get to shape that. So that's, that is my statement, and I guess I lay my case to rest at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Commissioner Reiner, your final thoughts?
Yes, they are. I just want to say that this will not be the last discussion on this topic. We'll have a lot more. And we will be measuring this, and if more changes are needed, we'll make them. So I think the goal is important in what we have in mind, and I think that we all agree on what the goal is. So I just say let's give this a try and take a look at it in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Reiner. I will make one last comment that I certainly appreciate this board not politicizing this issue and making sure that it's really about diversity, inclusion, and getting it embedded into our government. I think it's important. I think it's really important work, and I'm glad that you're all prioritizing it and keeping politics out of it. It really pleases me. With that, we do have a resolution that has been offered and is before us. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
And there's one opposition, Commissioner Meisner. Next, we will move to the Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee Chair Report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've just got two new contracts through the medical examiner's office. The first one is to recommend that the county board approve an agreement with Tremblou County Coroner's Office located in White Hall, Wisconsin, for autopsy services for a one-year term with automatic renewals for two two-year terms.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
A motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next item.
The second contract is to approve an agreement with Jackson County Coroner's Office located in Black River Falls, Wisconsin, for autopsy services for a one-year term with automatic renewals for two two-year terms. And I'll move that.
There is a motion to approve by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Commissioner Look. Further comments, Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, I just want to commend the work they're doing over there. I mean, you look at these continual contracts we're getting, and I don't have the count right now, but it's a lot of them. And we just hired somebody to do more work over there. And I think, at least from a state, and this is Wisconsin, now other states have identified this office and the professionalism that we have. And as some folks may know, this is in legal territory. You have to do very specific things and have the right qualifications to... In the event that you're challenged legally or whatever the case may be. And that's precisely what they do out there. They do a phenomenal job, and I really want to make mention of that because it's being noticed by quite a few other agencies.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. We recently had a management change over there, and Shane Sheets is doing a great job for us. And again, the quality of the work they do is probably more important than the quantity. But the quantity helps us. It helps us maintain the right number of people over there to keep the quality where it's at. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that item passes.
And that concludes my IG report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. We will now go to the Transportation Committee's Chair Report. As the Chair of the Committee, I recommend approval of a resolution supporting a funding application to the Minnesota Department of Transportation for a Section 50310 Transit Coordination Assistance Project, or TCAP, grant to study transportation services for enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities. Is there an offer of the resolution? I'll offer it. Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Gamasch. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That item passes. Next, in our Survey Division, I recommend that the Committee approve a final plat of Lincoln Estates located in Section 33, Township 34, Range 22, Linwood Township. This plat meets all township recommendations and ordinances and was approved in its final platform by the Township of Linwood on May 25th of this year. All recommendations and applicable Anoka County ordinances, in effect, have been met. This is Chris and Carolyn Trost are the owners and developers of this property. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Reiner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That item passes. That concludes my Transportation Chair Report. I will now turn to our IT report from Commissioner Gamasch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The IT Committee met on June 21st, and we have two action items. The Committee recommends the county board to approve Master Contract C-0008578 with Macro Technologies LLC for technical professional services. We have a need for a master contract, and Macro Technologies has the capabilities and can help us with that, and that's why we're moving forward with this type of a master contract. It gives us, defines predictable hourly rates and a number of other terms and conditions which make things a little bit easier for our staff and our team. And I'd like to move forward and move this.
There is a motion to approve the master contract with Macro Technologies. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes.
Item number two, the IT Committee recommends the county board to approve Master Contract C-0008579 with CDW Government, Inc., for technical professional services. Similar to the Macro Technologies LLC contract, this is a need for, again, a master contract that does help us with predictability and also different expertise in terms and conditions that we can rely on moving forward, and I'll move that as well.
There's a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
That item passes.
That concludes my report. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamasch. I'm just making sure. Next, we will move on to the Internal Audit Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Internal Audit Committee met on June 23rd and came away with some really good news. We continue to have a great relationship with the State Auditor's Office, who does our auditing. And in the past, you know, they'll find maybe a couple items here and there. I know they're picking on Joe previous years on Salt Storage Ben, I think it was. But at any rate, all that's been cleaned up. And this year, we received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest rating attainable. And we were one of the few counties in the state that actually got that rating. I think with a lot of the CARES money and some of the criteria that some counties maybe didn't apply carefully, and we did, you know, they kind of got caught up in the audit process. But our CARES team did a fantastic job of following all that criteria. Credit to all of our staff and for the hard work they did, especially Cory's team. And he's out there. I don't think he heard that. But they did a phenomenal job, and these folks come in, they're very professional. We have a great relationship, but they hold us to make sure that everything is as it should be. And to receive an unmodified opinion in these somewhat turbulent times, I think, is really, really a testament to outstanding work. And as usual, we continue to do our internal audit with Chuck and different audits around the county and different departments and trying to identify maybe weaknesses and areas where we can improve. And so we continue to do great work in that. And aside from that, that concludes my report.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Look. I will go on to comment that I've served in government for almost two decades now. And we receive unmodified opinions regularly from the auditors, but almost nev... Well, never. This is the first time I've had one without a single written comment of something that needs to be fixed. Because you can get an unmodified opinion and still have some corrections that need to be done. And this is the very first time of all my city government work and now county government work. And just thoroughly impressed, not only with Cory's team, but every department in this county has a hand in that. Everybody uses finance. Everybody got audited. CARES dollars really hit every, almost every department we have. So kudos to our administrator and right on down the line because that, there's no better feeling than when the state auditor is sitting in your office telling you, yeah, there's 87 counties and there's only one that's going to get this kind of rating. There's only one that's not going to have a single written note. That's a pretty important statement. So thank you for your work, Commissioner Look, and Mr. Denninger, for all your work. It's duly noted and greatly appreciated. And thank you, Commissioner Look, for your report. We will now go to the Parks Committee Report, and Commissioner Gamasch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Parks Committee met on Tuesday, July 6th, out at Chamonix Golf Course. We had one action item. The Committee authorized public firewood sales to be conducted by the Parks Department during the months of September and October of 2021. And I'll move that.
There's a motion before us. Is there a second? I'm not sure this is a county board action item, though. This is just something you did at the committee.
You're right.
So we'll just have Jeff tell us about it if that's what you'd like.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead with that. Mr. Perry.
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jeff Perry, Park Director for Anoka County. Yes, we have a surplus of firewood from our forest health management operations. And when we have a surplus that we don't use at our campgrounds, then we offer a sale to the public. And we do a marketing analysis across the county and make sure that, you know, the local vendors were not undercutting or overcutting them. We price it at $90 per fireplace cord, which is a third of an actual cord. And we'll be conducting sales in September and October of this year. Information will be available at our, on our website. Pre-registration is required. So members of the public that are interested, go to anokacountyparks.com. You can register and prepay. And then you show up on a Saturday morning and you load your firewood yourself, and off you go. We've been doing this for a number of years. It's a good practice for forest management. We get 100% utilization of our forest products across our county park system, and we stand ready to offer this service to the public. So with that, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that is the action before you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. And in parts, the rest of the committee meeting included our department budget, where we talked about for most of the period of time. So we get good numbers from what was happening in parks. And then we had an update for Chamonix Golf Course. Since we were at Chamonix, we were able to have Mark Johnson join us, who now runs the course out there. And in the conversation that we had, it came up that there was still, as I think, as he indicated, a cloud over Chamonix Golf Course that he hears about from time to time. And in part of our discussion, Commissioner Reiner made a motion that we begin to try to lift that cloud by making a statement of some kind that says that Chamonix is doing well, back in shape from what we had hoped from three years ago as we're into the third year of this program. And that's why we wanted to bring this here to you today, show you some of the numbers that Mr. Perry has for us about how Chamonix Golf Course is doing, and have a bit of a discussion as to how to help lift this cloud that's over the golf course. I've heard it myself from golfers at the course while sitting and having an adult beverage after a round of golf. And there was a table of eight that began to talk about Chamonix closing and Chamonix doing this and Chamonix doing that. And matter of fact, I heard it at another golf course, oh, about 30 miles away, down in Lake Elmo, where people were talking about Chamonix Golf Course. So there are some, there are things out there that we need to correct, or not correct, but we need to discuss because it does affect our ability to keep leagues going. Leagues are a main part of running a golf course because they play during the week, during the afternoons, sometimes in the mornings, where it's hard to build your golf crews out there. It's hard to get people to come out and golf in the afternoon. They're working. So, but the retirees and those groups are very important. So we wanted to try to do that, and that was what Mark suggested that we try to do. So Jeff, I will turn it over to you, kind of walk through some of the quick numbers as to how Chamonix is doing, and then we can talk about lifting this cloud.
I think before we go to Jeff, Commissioner Look has a comment, and then we'll go to Jeff's report.
Just a question, a comment. Did they pronounce it correctly?
They did.
No, the course, thanks for having the meeting out there. That was great. The course is absolutely beautiful. I mean, Mark is doing a fantastic job on that. We're coming out of a drought, and that course is gorgeous. So he is really taking steps to do what he can to keep it beautiful. And I think, you know, aside from the trees that reach out and grab your golf balls when you, you know, it's a fun course. And so if folks haven't had an opportunity to play it, you know, you want to make sure you're hitting straight. But it's a phenomenal course. They'll really enjoy it, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. Commissioner Reiner.
I just want to make one quick comment prior to presentation here. So just to give emphasis to the fact that people are wondering what is going on. I think our meeting was, what, last Tuesday, wasn't it? A week ago? And so just from the Commander of the American Legion last Friday, I received this. Is Chamonix going to stay open? I'm hearing they want to close it again. So it is out there, and it is real. And this is, you know, the Commander of the American Legion, who talks to a lot of people, is influential. And also, they do golf tournaments every once in a while. But I would like to also tell Paul, the Commander, it's C-H-O-M-O-N-I-X. So that's commonly misspelled, but it is Chamonix, so.
Commonly misspelled and mispronounced, but nonetheless, it is a great golf course. And the numbers have proven that we're not closing it. The public should know that. And if we need to tell them here in more than one way, we will. But Jeff, I think, is going to give us some opportunity here and tell us about the course, finances, and where we should go. Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gamasch, and members of the board. First of all, thank you for your trust in the department. Three years ago in 2019, when the decision was made to give it a three-year trial period, to give our staff an opportunity to turn things around out there. We were bleeding red back then. We had been previous to 2019 for a number of years as well. So we were charged with the responsibility to turn it around. And I can provide a really quick update on what that's looked like over the past three years. This is real data on the revenue versus expenses. The goal tasked to the Parks Department essentially was to have the blue line, the revenue line, meet with the orange line or exceed it. And as you can tell, the three-year trend from 2019, we are accomplishing that objective. The three-year trend has clearly demonstrated success and stability at Chamonix Golf Course. And we put together a strategic plan every, each of those three years, starting in 2019. And I won't get into detail on that. But it did involve hiring a new golf professional in the clubhouse, Mark Johnson. And he's done a tremendous job. In particular, the Parks Committee, we bring Mark in on an annual basis, sometimes a little more than that, to provide an update to the Parks Committee on the financial stability of Chamonix Golf Course. So just some areas that we have improved on and increased. Our season pass sales are up. Our Players Club program, which is a new program that gives golfers incentive to pay a fee and then get lower round fees Monday through Friday. It's been an outstanding program. Our golf cart rentals are on the increase. Our room rentals are on the increase. Driving range is going through the roof. We opened early this year because we had that nice weather in early March. So we opened the driving range in early March, and we've had to order, as of yesterday, the third round of range balls for the... of yesterday, the third round of, of range balls for the, for the driving range. So, that's good news. And we do retrieve as many as we can out there as well. But due to some of the wetlands, some of those golf balls do disappear. Food and beverage sales, pleased to report, we're doing very well in that area. And, you know, our goal is to continually improve. I'm not saying that it's perfect, but our goal and our objective is to continually improve the golfer experience at Chamonix Golf Course, continually look at our operating efficiencies, our fiscal responsibilities, and preserving the natural setting of the golf course. Commissioner Luck alluded to it. I mean, it is a beautiful setting. On any given day, you can golf Chamonix and, and have run into sandhill cranes, red fox, whitetail deer on the course. And on occasion, you might see a skunk or raccoon digging a hole. So, we, we try to keep that under control. But our, in terms of our maintenance of the course, too, it, Greg Eden, our golf course superintendent, does an outstanding job. And under, you know, the, the variables of weather and, and lack of rain this year, the course, I would, I would give it a 10. It, it does, it truly looks outstanding. Lastly, this is a timely decision to have cohesive support for our business continuity of our operations at Chamonix. We want a loyal customer base. We feel that by informing them now so that the leagues can re-up for next year, that the tournaments can re-up, even staff retention for that matter, too. It's nice to be able to say, "Hey, we're gonna, we're gonna be operating in 2022 and beyond there as well." So, all of that coupled together, it's, it's a wonderful asset locally and regionally, you know, throughout the metropolitan area and even beyond. We get people outside of the metro that are coming in and using the course if they're visiting the area. So, it's, it's a tremendous asset. And in today's day and age, it's, it's a great recreational, outdoor recreational outlet. So, with that, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that concludes my, my brief presentation on Chamonix Golf Course.
Well, thank you, Jeff. Before I turn to Commissioner Reiner for his comment, I will say on the range ball issue, I was the one shanking them to the right. Commissioner Luck was the one putting them over the end net. But that was years ago. Commissioner Reiner?
Just a couple of comments that I noticed at the meeting that we had with Mark Johnson, who is a new manager of Chamonix Golf Course. And he is truly no understatement to rockstar and has done incredible things for us. He comes with a vast amount of experience. I believe it's the San Diego area where he was living and then moved here. So, maybe he's not so bright, but, because there he could, you know, obviously play, play golf 12 months out of the year. But when, when he was looking at moving back to Minnesota, this is where he's from, and that, and he was looking at this opportunity, and he looked at the fact that, you know, the county board had given three years to turn this thing around. He had mentioned at the county, or at the committee meeting, "No." I mean, it was just a hard "no." I'm not going to do that because it takes a lot longer than that. His experience out there is that, you know, it's, you need at least seven years to turn something around, just with habits and, you know, changes you have to make and everything like that. I don't know what the main reason was where then he ended up saying yes, but I'm glad he did because it is a short amount of time that he's been there. He's made a lot of different change. I think, I think one of the big things is, is just him and his management style and his ability to, you know, have a good team, do what they're supposed to do every day. But he has made a lot of other changes, too, that are, obviously we're seeing the effects of that. So, one of the things he said, too, is, is that he had a very demanding group that he worked with before. And so, although we're seeing strides towards improvement and stuff like that, his comment was, "I'm just getting going." So, he sees that there is a tremendous amount of upward trajectory for improvement with that, that course into the future. Because like he said, his mind is kind of a seven-year glide path to, you know, getting to where he wants to go. And we're, we're barely three years in. So, I think we can be looking to see a lot more improvement and a lot, a lot more, a lot of, a lot of better things. But one thing he did say, "Boy, if we could remove that cloud, it'd really help," you know, him running it and doing what he needs to, to have everybody else build confidence. And that's going to be there in the future. That's users and employees.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Reiner. From my perspective, we, I mean, that cloud needs to go away one way or another. But it's important that we know we are still responsible to make sure this doesn't happen again. What happened four years ago or five years ago, whatever it was that led to this point where we had to have this sudden and radical oversight, none of us want to do that. That's not our job. We want Parks and Chamonix to run on their own and do a fantastic job. And, and I think we're there. I think we're at that point. But we're going to stay on top of it and make sure that it stays in a reasonably good place so that we can correct it quickly. But somehow, and I, and I think we leave it right on Park's shoulders, their job to remove the cloud. We'll do it publicly. We'll say what we need to hear. But what advertising you need to do to say, "Hey, the decision's been made and we're in business and we're here to stay," I think, I think it's fair to say that's something we can delegate there and maybe work with Eric at Communications to find out the best way to get that message out. Commissioner Reiner again, and then back to the Chair of the Committee.
Yeah. So, you know, one of the things that we looked at, we wanted to take action at the committee meeting to actually move in the direction of lifting this cloud. But then what, what the motion actually ended up being is that we were directing staff to take a look at, you know, what action the board might have to take to, I guess, eliminate or reverse whatever was imposed on. I think there was an actual board action that was taken, wasn't there? So, then we have to, I guess, maybe take an action to remove or reverse it.
I'm not sure we need, we, we said we would look at it for three years. And if it hadn't improved, we would take action. Well, it's improved. So, I don't know that we need to take a reverse action. The three years have gone by. The numbers are great. At this point, we say, "Hey, what action we took was done. It's over. And we're back on the glide path we were before," using your term, "except perhaps in a much better place than we were then. We're just gonna, we're still gonna watch it. Like I said, we're not going to let it get to the place it was."
So, maybe a press release?
That's what I think it is. I think it's press release and flyers hanging at Chamonix that say, "Hey, we're back to stay. The county board says we're doing great." And we know it. But I think that's really the direction we're getting. I don't think it requires a vote of the board. But certainly, this vote, this board talking about it publicly and clearly expressing to people they know or people on social media that, "Hey, we've made the turn. We're around the bend and things are going great. And we're open for business." That will do a lot to continue that energy at Chamonix. I'm going to go to Mike because it's his committee, and then I'll go to you, Commissioner Meisner. I'm sorry, Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to put it out there. I know that we don't get the press here, but they watch the event, or they watch our, our board meetings. And just to let them know at the Anoka County Board, or the Anoka County Herald, that we are in good shape. The course is, is functioning just as it should be. We're having a great year. The work that Mark has done with his team to reduce expenses, to find every nook and cranny of areas that needed, that could be cut and still provide the great services that we provide out there at the golf course, whether it's the great, well, hot dogs, yeah, they're pretty good. But, you know, we've, we've looked at everything. And we've done, we've done the hard work of, of really reducing the budget as, as much as possible. And as Jeff indicated, our supervisor, turf guy, Greg Eden, Eden, has been doing a fantastic job. You, you can't beat that course. You don't run into any putting, any greens that have divots on it or ball divots. And it's taken care of extremely well. You get good roll when you're on the draw, when you're on the fairways. It's just a, just a great course. And I've golfed a couple of local courses where you literally could not put a tee into the ground on some of the tee boxes. They were that dried up and that hard. That's not Chamonix. Chamonix is in great shape. And it's always going to be a golf, it's, golf is always going to be subject to the weather. If we get weekends where it's raining all the time, that's going to be a problem. We're going to have some issues. We're going to have to probably make some cuts here and there. But I think we've laid out the groundwork now for Chamonix to be the success that it needs to be and can be for a long period of time. We've brought some people back into golf. One of the aspects of the COVID-19 issue was that people had an opportunity to golf. They could go out and feel safe. And a lot of them were working from home so they could, you know, work that early morning tee time in and then work a little later in the evening for whoever they were working with at home. But we've got that now. And I think we're going to build on that and continue that down the road. And Mark has done a fantastic job of bringing new ideas on the passes and the fees that we, that we charge. But it gives people an opportunity to budget better and also to take advantage of some of those things. So, I think we're right on the right road. And, you know, I'm not expecting a front-page banner headlines, but, you know, we should get an article or two that Chamonix is doing the great job. People out there are doing a great job. And, and we're back. And we're, we're back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Well, I'm just going back to some of the discussion in the Parks Committee, because my recollection is the original action item for this, we, we said three years and then we would reevaluate it. So, it was very open-ended. And I don't know, Mr. Chair, if even, to me, a black and white statement from you saying, "We've evaluated, it will remain open, full stop," you know, I think would be good. And then I just wanted to also acknowledge the community. Because I remember when this first came about and we said, "All right, we'll give it a three-year window." And I was very much also, "This is a two-way street. So, unless the community shows up and participates, then, you know, that, that's a huge indicator of the success or not." And you did. So, thank you. And I just wanted to also recognize community who has continued to patronize the, the facility and will, will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamache, back to you for the-
Yeah. And then one last thing. Friday, August 13th, is the next Common Man Open. It starts at 12:00 noon. If you want to golf with the Common Man, well, you can't, sometimes you can golf with the Common Man if he gets done with his radio show in time. He'll come out and hit some balls, usually with a foursome or two. And, but we have a great time out there. It's a great course to play, as I told you before. And if you haven't been out there, get out there now because you're missing one of the best gems in the Twin Cities area to get out and play. And that's Friday, August 13th, if you want to play with the Common Man. That's where, that's where the action's going to be. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Commissioner Meisner, let's go to the Property Records and Taxation Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Property Records and Taxation Committee, Committee was met on June 21st, 2021, here in the Government Center. There are no public records to share. But again, I always like to remind the public that you can either make comments at our committee by showing up in person or sending an email for a question or concern of anything on the agenda to proptax@anoka, or, excuse me, @co.anoka.mn.us. So, we have one action item from the committee meeting. And we recommend that the board adopt Resolution 2021 PRT-7, which is the application by the City of Andover for conveyance of tax forfeited property for nonconservation for an authorized public purpose to facilitate development for a market value of $11,800, pin number 29-32-24-42-006, in the City of Andover. And I will move that.
There has been an offer of the resolution. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that item passes. Just for clarity quickly, we have gone back to our old way of doing business with public comments. We do not take them by email. They need to be in person for public comments.
Oh. Okay.
So, come on into our committee meetings anytime. Our county boardroom, we're open to the public, and we will accept your public comments at our meetings. Commissioner Meisner?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, well, A, thank you for clarifying that for me. Clearly, I did not know that. But then, then, just a quick question. So, so truly, the only way that, that the public can make comment is to physically be there. What if they email the Chair of any committee?
Then the Chair of the committee can make that report as part of his words.
Okay. Okay. All right. All right. Very good. The rest of the, my report is informational, but as always, I do like to share with the public. So, a few updates from our elections, which is Paul. Candidate filing for the November 2nd, 2021 elections begins next month, or this month now, on July 27th. Mayor and council member are on the ballot in Circle Pines and Lionel Lakes. Candidates file at the City Hall. The school board candidates for school districts 11, 14, and 16 file with the Anoka County Elections Office. And candidates in school district 624 file in Ramsey County. You can contact the Anoka County Elections Office with any questions. And from Alex, a few updates. In the City of Columbus, we have a new contract effective as of July 1st through May 2024. New contract rates, and actually, this is good news for our partners, which are less expensive. New contracts made were made possible through recent business process improvements, staffing turnover, as well as efficiency gain from our new ISO World system. And our yearly rate decreases ranged from 15 to 19%, depending on parcel makeup. So, that concludes my report. Although our next scheduled meeting will be Monday, July 19th, at 1:00, again, held here at the, the Anoka County Government Center in Room 710. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Now, we're going to actually go to your chair report for Property Records and Taxation so we can act on that City of Columbus.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes. So, one action item for the chair report, which is we recommend the county board approve Contract C0008686, which is a joint powers agreement between the City of Columbus and County of Anoka for assessment of property for the remainder of 2021 calendar year through May 2025. And I will move that as well.
There is a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Luck.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye. That item passes. And that concludes your chair's report, I assume.
I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Chair, that concludes my chair's report.
Thank you. We will then move on to the last item on our agenda, item nine, where we'll consider appointing two commissioners to the Association of Minnesota County's Board of Directors for the remainder of program year 2021, where Commissioner Reiner will serve as the primary and Commissioner Brassad will serve as the alternate.
Motion to oppose, or I mean, approve.
I missed it. Do we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Luck? Is there a second?
I had a second on the first part, but no.
Thank you for your support.
I need a second first. Was there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Discussion, we'll turn to Commissioner Meisner.
Yeah. I just have a, I should, I should know this. But who is, who is the replay, who was the main commissioner? Was that you?
Commissioner West.
Oh, Commissioner West. Okay. Okay. Very good.
I do serve on that board.
Yeah.
Because I was a member of the Executive Committee. I still am, actually, as a past president. But I will continue to serve because I am the Chair of their Premier Business Partnership Committee. So, that automatically keeps me on the board. So, as long as I'm in that position, Anoka County has better representation than most counties within, within the state because we actually have more representation because of that position.
Well, I do, I do support it. I just couldn't remember who the, what the change was.
So, the motion, the seconds before us, if there is no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Oh, nobody's opposed. That item passes. Well, that concludes our board meeting for today. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.